In fact, it's so special that we only do this twice a year. It's our recognition ceremony and everybody here is either here because we're recognizing you or you're here because you love somebody we're recognizing. So it's just one of those feel-good, positive moments that sometimes, especially in this time, we need those. So I hope all of you walk out of here just feeling wonderful about each other and about life. But there's always got to be some cloud over us. So our Joan Council has one piece of business will take care of it very fast. Mr. Paul Marini, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate being described as a cloud over the proceedings. Congratulations to everybody out here. One small piece of business, as you know, we have to have a school board member on the value adjustment board. And our current member and alternate on the value adjustment board is Member Gallo and Member Salamanca. And the next meeting of the value adjustment board is April 17th. Neither of them will be present, so we need to have another alternate eligible to serve. And apparently, these appeals have to be heard before our next board meeting on April 22nd, so I can't wait till then. My understanding is that Member Vanos has graciously offered to step in on this, so I would just need consensus from the board that she be the second alternate that can serve on April 17th.
All right. Anybody disagree with that? You have consensus. All right. Thank you, Mr. Paul Marini.
Thank you, and congratulations to everybody here. Wonderful to see everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. So tonight, we're going to honor some remarkable students, some dedicated OCPS employees, and selfless community members who make a difference every single day. Each recognition tonight is unique, but there's one common thread that connects all of them. At OCPS, helping students discover their path is what we do, but it's a team effort, and we couldn't do it without all of y'all's help. This evening, each board member will present recognitions that they've personally selected, and each of the recipients will be invited forward after the recognition for a photo and a certificate, unless you've already received a certificate. Please stay with us if you can till the end of the ceremony, and if you have time, join us afterwards for a small reception so that we can honor you and you all can share the joy of spending a little time together. I always find that like just such a wonderful time, so. Okay, let me start. I get to start. So I want to start by honoring a group of students, a group of our CTE scholars. These students have long been championed by Deputy Superintendent Mike Armbruster. Mike, are you around?
No.
Okay. I would have, I would tell you about steak and lobster, but you wouldn't understand what I'm talking about without Mike here to tell it. It's not so funny, so if he shows up, he can explain that. But anyway, we have actually 47 high school seniors. And what they've done, they've completed dual enrollment through Orange Technical College. They've maintained a weighted GPA average of 4.0 or higher. They've completed five or more vigorous AP, IB, Cambridge, or academic dual enrollment courses. So to help us honor them, please welcome Rosa Grant, Executive Leader for Career and Technical Education. Ms. Grant, tell us a little bit more about our wonderful kids.
Superintendent Vasquez, Chair Jacobs, and board members, we are thrilled to honor the CTE scholars. They've worked really hard, and as you mentioned, they are not only taking career technical dual enrollment, but they're also taking AP and IB classes as well. And these students have worked hard, and we deserve to be recognized. So as I say your name, if you would stand, Selena Carter from Apopka High School, Patient Melania Valley from Colonial High School, Patient Care Assisting. Jacob DeRoe Lopez, Cypress Creek High School, Fundamental Foods. Brandy Joseph, Patient Care Assistant, Evans High School. Fitzdaro Joseph, Pharmacy Tech, Evans High School. Alina Mason, Practical Nursing, Freedom High School. Kalani Alexandra, Patient Care Assistant, Jones High School. Nyeli Blaze, Patient Care Assistant, Jones High School. Farah Brumdrum, Practical Nursing, Jones High School. Brooklyn Bryant, Practical Nursing, Jones High School. Gazelle Dal Rippon, Practical Nursing, Jones High School. Bianca Desmore, Practical Nursing, Jones High School. Taylor Carter, Practical Nursing, Jones High School. Joe Santiago Rodriguez, Pharmacy Tech, Lake Nona High School. Hillary Martinez Gonzalez, Patient Care Assistant, Timber Creek High School. And William Malzoni, Fundamental Foods of West Orange High School. Can they come up, take a picture? Can they come up?
Okay, yes. If we could get all of them up, I know the board members would love to have an opportunity to shake their hands and congratulate them on amazing accomplishment, and we'd like to get a group photo.
Congratulations.
Oh, y'all trying to shake my hand.
Congratulations.
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 Good. Turn sideways a little bit. Everybody shingle, get in. We'll just put the kids up.
There we go. Okay. There we go. Yes, ma'am.
On the stairs.
Yeah, when you were up.
If you have the big circle, please bring it.
Oh, yeah. Bring the circle, yeah.
Do you remember?
Yep.
Were you at the event when I spent more time?
I remember that.
I loved him so much.
He is such a good guy.
He had my vote.
Slide in, slide in. Shingle, turn sideways, like, pose. Good, good. If I fall over sometimes, please catch me. Look happy on three. Get one, two, and three. Stay there, hold on. Let's see how you look. Let's do one more. And there's a lot of people that love you, so we can have more.
Wow, look at this.
It's the elder day now.
Oh, wow. Check it out.
Yeah, did you see the principals are here?
Are the principals here?
Oh, are the principals? Come on.
Are the principals here? Principals, yes. Principals.
Good. Turn sideways again. Shingle, shingle, shingle. If you have opportunities, don't worry. So we turn, so you guys are going to turn that way. Turn your body. You're going to be half the, you probably move it more. I believe in you. You probably, you know, move in, same with me. It's like we're in the subway. This is the way you guys are turning.
This way.
So, and that way. Squeeze in, a little bit more, squeeze, squeeze. Good. Backwards, look up, look happy on three. Get one, two, and three. That actually works. Coming a little bit closer. Hold on one second. No, okay, no. Okay.
Oh, here we go.
Sir, okay, we're going to throw the dots in the middle because you're very valuable, sir.
Can I climb up on something or just?
Dot com. It's upside down. Before we get to the happy, enjoy the dot. One more. Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. You change your hands.
Maybe they're trying to come here with that dot.
That's funny. Can I just say a quick word?
Of course. All right, we have a quick word from our Vice Chair, Member Byrd.
I just want to congratulate our students that achieved this accomplishment. It's quite an accomplishment, and I'm going to give Dr. Armbruster a little honor here and explain his steak and lobster is always that you don't have to choose one of the great things. You can have both of the great things. You can have steak and lobster together. You don't have to, you know, college, take college courses, college, yeah, college courses, and then not do career and technical education. Or if you're, you know, a career and technical education student, that doesn't mean that you can't take those strenuous college courses. You can have the best of both worlds. And these students are showing what a great possibility that opportunity provides. And, you know, you've got to think, many of these kids are probably going to go on to college, and they're going to walk in as freshmen in college with a certificate to go get a job where they're making a really good living while they're in college, unlike those of us who worked at like Publix, you know, when we were in college, or McDonald's or something. These kids are going to have the opportunity to have these great jobs while they're in school, or some of them are going to go on straight out of high school and have these great careers they're already ready for. So thank you to all of our CTE educators that got these kids here where they're at. Thank you to our schools for providing these opportunities. And I'm just going to put a quick plug in to reach out to your legislators to make sure that they keep our funding for our career and technical education programs just like these, so that all of our students can continue these programs. Thank you.
Vice Chair, thank you. Thank you for taking the opportunity. Make sure everybody understands what an accomplishment this is. And I tell you what, I just don't think there's anything better than public education. I don't think anybody does it better. Ms. Grant.
Yes, I'm so sorry, but we have a surprise special presentation. And Assistant Director of Media Relations, Lauren Roth, will do that.
Ms. Roth, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosa, and thank you to the board. So every year for the past 12 years, the Orange County Retired Educators Association has provided scholarships that help both OCPS students and teachers. That includes 10 scholarships this year for graduating high school seniors, 12 scholarships for technical education, we just heard about how important that is, and two scholarships for OCPS teachers who are pursuing master's degrees. This is all made possible by their foundation. So tonight, Association President Janice Quint, Foundation President David McGee, and several other retired educators are here to present checks to the two teachers. Can the members of OCREA and the foundation please stand? Okay, wonderful. And I'd now like to turn things over to Mr. McGee. He's going to announce the winners and present the checks, and then we'll get photos with the teachers and all the members. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing us here tonight. My name is David McGee. I'm Chairman of the Retired Educators Foundation of Orange County. Here with me are four directors also of the board. There's Dr. Kim Stutzman in the middle here, Monica Pressley, Jan Quint, and Christie Woods. And they're all past presidents and presidents of the Retired Educators Association. We are tasked with awarding scholarships with the funds that were raised some 40 years ago, when some very out-forward-looking people said there was not a lot of teachers' housing available, and they actually put their money up and helped find places for teachers to live. Well, that lasted about three or four years because the housing caught up, and so they sold that property that they had started with. And that money was given to this board for scholarship funds that we've been working with for the last 15 to 20 years. So it's retired educators, county purchased housing. Years later, they sold it, the proceeds invested, and we are the custodians of that great honor of awarding scholarships to worthy applicants. The Scholarship Committee awards three different types of scholarships. The academic scholarships is awarded to Orange County graduating students. We had 12 of those at $2,000 apiece. Orange Technical College students, which we have a lot of those students here tonight, we have 10 of those awards, giving those $1,000 each. And we also have two educator awards that are going to teachers that are going to be working on their graduate degrees in $2,000 increments. So that's, we award over $30,000 to $40,000, believe it or not, every year to students and faculty members like that. And tonight, or this evening, we'd like to award Ms. Amy Lynn Matson of Cypress Keep High School. Would you please come on up with your husband? And Mrs. Brianna Walsh from Akiva High School. They're receiving $2,000 each. And congratulations to these outstanding educators. That's our...
Come on down to the table?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
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 If you can find a way to get a message to Lauren, see if she can find out how much money the Harris Rosen Foundation has contributed to us.
All right, any other cameo performances here? All right, this evening, I'm also honored to be able to recognize some very special guests that are here with us. Senior Judge Emerson Thompson Jr. and the Thompson family. Would you all just stand for just a minute so we can recognize you? There you are. I was trying to find you in the audience. We are so grateful you could join us tonight as we pay tribute to the life and legacy of State Senator Geraldine Thompson, your wife, your mother, your cousin, and to us, a beloved leader in our community. Before we share more about you, I wanted to personally thank each one of you. Public service is never a solo journey. It requires the support of loved ones. This family has supported not only Senator Thompson, but also Judge Thompson, whose years of service we deeply value. Judge, we thank you for your enduring commitment to this community. So on a personal note, I first met Senator Thompson, then Representative Thompson, shortly after I was elected to the county commission. I was so honored when she reached out to me. She wanted to share her vision for what would become the Wells-Built Museum of African-American History and Culture. I also had the tremendous honor and joy of attending what I believe was one of the first events where students attended. Throughout the years, which turned into decades, like so many in this community, I was inspired by her public service. She taught at OCPS for six years. She served at Valencia College for over two decades. She preserved history through the Wells-Built Museum, and she was a beloved family matriarch and a community trailblazer. Senator Thompson's life was one of purpose, of compassion, of vision, and commitment. Throughout her career, she remained committed to education, history, community, and public service. Tonight, we honor her legacy with a proclamation. I've asked Member Vicki Felder if she will read the proclamation on behalf of the board with all the heart and passion it deserves. Member Felder, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to say just before I read this proclamation that I knew Senator Geraldine Thompson for a while when I sat on the Valencia Black Advisory Board. She wanted my mom and I to sit on that board, and she knew of my passion and love for theater. She directed a show about the Okoye massacre, and there was a concern about who was going to direct it. She knew how much I wanted to do it, so what she did, she did a boss move. She made me the artistic director, and the other guy couldn't direct it. She was always an advocate, always an advocate. So I take this as an honor, board members, to read this proclamation. Whereas Senator Geraldine Thompson was a dedicated public servant who represented Western Orange County in both the Florida House and Senate, beginning in 2006. And whereas Geraldine Thompson was born in New Orleans, Louisiana, and moved to Florida in 1955. And whereas she worked as a teacher for Orange County Public Schools for six years before becoming an administrator at Valencia Community College for 24 years. And whereas she founded the Wells-Built Museum of African-American History and Culture, preserving important stories and memorabilia of the Civil Rights Movement and African art. And whereas Thompson wrote the Orlando Book in the Black America series recounting 150 years of black history in the city. And whereas she was a strong advocate for education and a devoted wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, whose wisdom and compassion shaped the lives in the community across the state. And whereas Orange County Public Schools and the entire Central Florida community mourn the loss of Geraldine Thompson, who passed away on Thursday, February 13, 2025. Now, therefore, the School Board of Orange County, Florida, does hereby acknowledge and declare that Geraldine Thompson will be remembered as a beacon for education and the civil rights, and her contributions have and will continue to help our students and the community in the future. Adopted by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, in Orlando, Florida, on this 25th
Thank you so much, Member Felder. I also want to recognize Member Douglas for a moment, and then we're going to ask the family if they'll come up for just for a brief picture and to present the proclamation.
I would like to honor as well Senator Geraldine Thompson. She didn't know who I was, and I was campaigning to become a school board member, and she offered, she said, "You can call me anytime and talk to me, and I will help you in any capacity I can." And I took her at her word, and I said, "Can we have a Zoom meeting?" And while I was in class at the end of the school, we had a Zoom meeting, and she really opened my eyes to so many opportunities that I could get. You know, it's just all about funding, you know, in Orange County in order to become a school board member. So I just want to say, it was a pleasure. It was an honor, and her humility is such an example. And I would like to become just like Geraldine Thompson, because she was always very humble and never just go out there and just say who I am. You are, oh, you never knew who she was when she was in the room, and I really admire that. And I thank you so much. Thank you. You had a fantastic time. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Judge Thompson, would you give us the honor of joining us up here? And if you have other family members, please, by all means. I should have explained at the beginning, I had foot surgery a couple of weeks ago. I would love to come down and join you, but it would take a little while.
Thank you so much for making time.
Yes, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that nothing can ever erase the pain of losing a loved one, but I do want you to know that here at OCPS and throughout this community, we mourn alongside of you of a great loss. All right, my final recognition tonight is to highlight a powerful legacy of giving, the work of the Harris Rosen Foundation. Over 20 years ago, Harris Rosen created the Tangilo Park Program. It remains a model today of cradle-to-career support aimed at breaking the cycle of poverty. Through the foundation, he provided Tangilo Park children free preschool, family support, college scholarships for all high school students who graduated. I can't put a value or a number on the millions of dollars that he's contributed, but the millions of dollars do not compare to the impact, the ripple effect, of changing the lives of so many children. And what that means to future families and the families after, when I think about the exponential impacts of affecting a community like that, it's hard to even grasp how big that is. So tonight, we're honored to be joined by Frank Santos. He's the CEO of Rosen Hotels and Resorts. And I've had the pleasure of seeing Mr. Santos at different events, meeting him on several occasions. Every time I have encountered Mr. Santos, he is just such a jewel, such a gracious man. And he is not just the right hand for Harris Rosen, but he's also been recognized for his own philanthropy. He received the 2023 Kenneth F. Murray Esquire Award as Central Florida Outstanding Philanthropist. So the reason that we are here this evening is not only to reflect on the impact of the foundation, but also for an announcement. So just a little background, a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was a little more than a month ago, I got a call from Frank and was delighted to hear from him. But he asked me a strange question. He wanted to know if it would be okay, if it would be okay if he gave each school board member $2,500 to award two seniors. How many people call you and ask permission to give money? Okay? And for a second, I thought, well, how gracious, but strange. But then I had this flashback to the first meeting I had with Harris Rosen after I was elected. He came to my office, and I have to tell you, when you're elected to office as a county commissioner, if somebody comes to your office, you can count on something. They either want something, or they're going to complain about something. So I'm ready. And he says, "I want to tell you, I'm very disappointed in county commissioners." Not surprised. And I said, "So what's been your experience?" And, you know, they either don't return phone calls, they don't honor promises. I'm ready. He says, "Nobody's ever asked me for anything." And I kid you not, nobody's ever asked me for anything. And for a second there, I was like, I don't even understand.
Thank you. I know that nothing can ever erase the pain of losing a loved one, but I do want you to know that here at OCPS and throughout this community, we mourn alongside of you of a great loss. All right. My final recognition tonight is to highlight a powerful legacy of giving, the work of the Harris Rosen Foundation. Over 20 years ago, Harris Rosen created the Tangilo Park Program. It remains a model today of cradle-to-career support aimed at breaking the cycle of poverty. Through the foundation, he provided Tangilo Park children free preschool, family support, college scholarships for all high school students who graduated. I can't put a value or a number on the millions of dollars that he's contributed, but the millions of dollars do not compare to the impact, the ripple effect, of changing the lives of so many children. And what that means to future families and the families after, when I think about the exponential impacts of affecting a community like that, it's hard to even grasp how big that is. So tonight, we're honored to be joined by Frank Santos. He's the CEO of Rosen Hotels and Resorts. And I've had the pleasure of seeing Mr. Santos at different events, meeting him on several occasions. Every time I have encountered Mr. Santos, he is just such a jewel, such a gracious man. And he is not just the right hand for Harris Rosen, but he's also been recognized for his own philanthropy. He received the 2023 Kenneth F. Murray Esquire Award as Central Florida Outstanding Philanthropist. So the reason that we are here this evening is not only to reflect on the impact of the foundation, but also for an announcement. So just a little background, a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was a little more than a month ago, I got a call from Frank and was delighted to hear from him. But he asked me a strange question. He wanted to know if it would be okay, if it would be okay if he gave each school board member $2,500 to award to seniors. How many people call you and ask permission to give money? Okay? And for a second, I thought, well, how gracious, but strange. But then I had this flashback to the first meeting I had with Harris Rosen after I was elected. He came to my office, and I have to tell you, when you're elected to office as a county commissioner, if somebody comes to your office, you can count on something. They either want something, or they're going to complain about something. So I'm ready. And he says, "I want to tell you, I'm very disappointed in county commissioners." Not surprised. And I said, "So what's been your experience?" And, you know, they either don't return phone calls, they don't honor promises, I'm ready. He says, "Nobody's ever asked me for anything." And I kid you not, nobody's ever asked me for anything. And for a second there, I was like, I don't even understand this conversation. He says, "You know, when you run for office, you should ask people to do something. So don't miss an opportunity to ask me." Well, I did ask him on numerous occasions, and he always came through overwhelmingly. So I shouldn't be surprised when Frank Santos, who spent 40 years working with Harris Rosen, that he would ask permission to give money to our kids. So, and it's no doubt in my mind that part of the reason that they've worked so closely together is their values are so closely aligned, and their life of caring for others and lifting others up is so similar. So that was a spoiler alert, you know what this is about, but I wanted to call Mr. Santos up to the podium if he would take just a minute or two to talk to us about, one, the impact of the Rosen Foundation and about the scholarships. And I can't tell you how pleased I am to know that the Rosen Foundation lives on and is in great hands. Mr. Santos.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Williams. It's my honor to be here tonight to represent the late Harris Rosen and his foundation. As we all know, Harris was committed to OCPS and programs he created, as you mentioned, in Tangilo Park 32 years ago, and Paramore partnering with OCPS for over 40 years. Today, we honor his memory with this new, it's a three-year scholarship program, and it is my goal to continue this program well beyond the three years. As Harris said many times, "Education creates a level playing field where everyone has a fair and equal chance of succeeding." Harris made sure that his foundation and the programs that he created would continue in perpetuity. So thank you for allowing us to have this new partnership with Orange County Public School and the board. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Frank, would you come up here so we can get a picture?
Yes, I have a big check, too.
And a big check.
And a big check.
Those are always fun.
Thanks so much.
That's so awesome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right. Now, I would like to turn this ceremony over to Member Farant so that she can present her recognition.
Thank you so much, Chair Jacobs. I am so, I love these evenings like tonight because we can honor people, whether it's students, teachers, community members, who are truly making a difference. And if there was, you know, if I had to sum up the main reason why I ran for school board, it was to make a difference here in Orange County, to see our students reading. And really, you know, when I say back to basics was something I ran on, it's really about getting those fundamentals right so that all the other things that we offer can really explode. And so tonight, I wanted to honor the Reed Charitable Foundation. I'm thrilled to honor Reed Charitable Foundation. And since hearing about the foundation three years ago, I have been blown away by their selfless pursuit of ensuring every child can read, not only in OCPS, but in our surrounding counties, and even, I believe, out of state. The Reed Charitable Foundation, or RCF, as I like to call it, was formed by a passionate mother, Jen Knopf. Jen, would you mind standing just for a moment? You see Jen's own son, Reed, R-E-E-D. Most of us would think Reed as in R-E-A-D. Oddly enough, I love that. Reed was a struggling reader who, after many tears and sleepless nights, was able to overcome his reading challenges, but only with the help from dedicated teachers trained in the science of reading. She quickly realized that her son was not the only struggling reader, but over 50% of students in Florida and nationally are not reading on grade level. Thus, RCF, Reed Charitable, was formed and now consists of an incredible team of passionate, hard-working teachers, mothers, and community leaders. Could the RCF team stand for a moment as well? The whole team, anybody who came with. Their work helps students from all walks of life with varying educational needs. And the confidence that Reed Charitable is bringing to educators is truly invaluable. They help teachers with strategies to teach phonics, phonemic awareness, and how to help students one-on-one. I have personally spoken to so many educators who felt the training they received from Reed Charitable was the missing piece they were so desperately looking for. So team, I just want to say tonight, thank you, Jen, and your incredible team of hard-working educators for pouring into the next generation. Your hard work, your efforts, and your expertise have not gotten unnoticed. Today, I honor you, all the hard work, the sweat and tears, every, everything that you do, I know that you make. Every day, you're going into schools, you're helping teachers. And not only, can I say, not only do they train teachers in the gold standard, as they love to call it, and I like to call it, but Orton Gillingham is like the gold standard of science of reading. And so not only do they train teachers, but they're also there, if a teacher is in the classroom and they're struggling and going, "Okay, well, I just learned this. How would I continue this? How does this work with this child?" They call up the Reed Charitable Foundation and say, "What would I do here?" And they can say, "Try this strategy, try that strategy." And so it's not a curriculum, it's just strategies. They're literally giving our teachers tools, just like you'd walk into Home Depot and you get your hammer and nails and you get your tools to build a house. They're giving teachers those tools to help students of all walks of life, because not every kid is able to just look at, you know, sight words, as we used to do, or different ways of learning to read and just get it. A lot of kids, as we're seeing with data, are not just getting it. And so what they are doing is just absolutely incredible. And so I, again, want to just honor you, Jen, and your entire team. Thank you for what you're doing, for pouring into our schools as a nonprofit. You're just pouring in and really doing this at such a minimal cost. It is absolutely incredible. And as a school board member, we're given, like, I call them my Oprah Winfrey funds. They're like funds that we're able to use to give to schools, to help their staff. And so this is something that I've committed with several of my schools, who are committed to helping their students and their staff really get on that next level. And so wanting to get them connected and trained, and I know we have our training here in OCPS, but this is like an additional training that they can go to. And the more training, the better. So thank you again. I'd love for you all to come up, and we'll take a quick picture together.
Thank you.
What's that?
The color.
She wanted to look like me today.
Thank you, Member Farant. And next is Board Member Douglas with her first-ever special recognition. Member Douglas, you're recognized.
After 25 years of being in the classroom, it's such a joy to be here and to acknowledge all these wonderful, I wish they would have stayed a little longer. It's such a joy to see them succeed and go into epic classes and IB programs and doing the CTE. Oh, my goodness, it's just amazing. I'm so excited about all these different pathways that students can take now. Now, as a new member, board member, meet and greets are an important way to meet people and to learn about our districts. So the first round of my meets and greets for employees in my district was held in February, guess where? Orange Technical College, West Campus. Oh, my goodness. Love, love. The team impressed me with their professionalism and generous hospitality. Would Michelle Negron, Scott Whiteall, and the Orange Technical College West Team, Jessica Breones, Russia Bawad, Denise Taver, Greg Brown, Seth Knight, Ralph Jan, and Rodney Denson, please stand.
They look great.
Thank you. Scott Whiteall and his team, the principal of OTC, portrayed the campus, his team, and the school programs in a very positive light. The audience who was there was impressed with all the opportunities available within OCPS. Scott was so gracious, he even offered tours of the schools. And not only that, he also gave free service, cosmetology service, to all the attendees. Okay? So they could go and have their nails done and their hair done if they wanted to. So what a great way to build connection. Now, I would like to talk to Scott and the team. What you do at that beautiful new OTC campus is so important. And it's important not just for our students, but for your entire, for the entire community. You are also a great example of how to turn a community meeting into a marketing opportunity. You did a good job. And Michelle Negron, thank you for making sure that every, every meeting ran smoothly. I appreciate how you gathered stakeholder feedback in a way that was transparent. And Thought Exchange is a great tool, but you had a master behind that Thought Exchange. You did an amazing job. And congratulations. Can you please come, all of you, so we can take photos? Yes, come on in, come on, and receive your certificate. Thank you so much. Thank you, I will, I will. Thank you.
Great job, team, and great job, Member Douglas, thank you so much. Now, I'd like to invite Member Felder to recognize her honorees.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. Tonight, I am thrilled to recognize my dear friend and prayer partner for over 30-some years, Doris Carlton, who has given extensively of her time and energy to help the fellowship of Christian athletes at Carver Middle School. Doris, can you please stand? Yes. Doris and I have not only been friends, but we worked together as teachers in alternative ed. So, and then we attended Carver Middle School together. She was, you know, two years younger than me, but her older brother and sister, we were all in the same class. So now, Doris is a graduate of Carver Middle. Go Bears, yes! She also believes in giving back to her past, current, and future community. Doris has jumped at the opportunity to help when the school asked her to volunteer. She is an active member of FCA, and she is a mentor for those children in that group. She goes beyond helping with her monthly meetings with them. She also brings snacks, they love that, and support at their sporting competitions. And you know she is there because she is one of the loudest members of the cheering section. And she calls me up and says, "Do you know Carver's doing da-da-da-da-da?" I said, "Doris, are you there?" "Yes, I am." I said, "Okay, you represent us well." "Thank you, thank you." So now, let's hear for Doris. She is someone that students can trust and rely on, both on the field and off. So now, Doris, if you would, please come up front and be recognized to receive your recognition certificate. And I also have a very nice coin with my name on it, Vicki Felder, District 5, where the talent resides. At a club at Molly Ray Elementary. Students there learn and grow all year under the guidance of sponsors Ms. Heidi Rays and Ms. Shalonda Cooper. In January, the club competed at the State Junior Beta Convention held here in Orlando. Teams and individuals earned high marks in categories related to academics, talents, and more. The theme was "Radiate," and the Molly Ray Club shined bright. With us tonight are Cal Walton With us tonight are Cal Walton, Carmen Destin Robb, and Heidi Rays. Can you please stand? Thank you. The club's extraordinary performance included 18 first-place championships, two second-place awards, and two third-place honors. Your performance reflects dedication to Beta's four pillars: academic achievement, character, leadership, and service. Of the 58 schools participating, Molly Ray Elementary was the only school transformation office school participating. That demonstrates how much talent resides in every one of our schools. It is just waiting to be recognized and cultivated. Ms. Cooper, who was unable to join us, was also voted statewide sponsor-elect. That means she will have a key role in next year's convention. Let's hear it for the Molly Ray Beta Club. I invite you all to come down for a photo and to receive the certificate and, of course, this coin that I'm giving you with my name on it. Yes. Make sure y'all tell Maria Solomon how many times I walk up these stairs. Alrighty then, that's a little private joke. The board know what I'm talking about. These are stairs, okay. Now, I am really delighted for this next person. I have a special guest from the Washington Shores Presbyterian Church with us this evening. Reverend Erica Rembert Smith, could you please stand? This church was a church I attended when I was a little girl also. It was right down the street from my house. This church is the driving force behind the rewards program for Washington Shores Elementary School. They have something called the Jaguar House, or Jaguar Room, and they fund all of the gifts, from bicycles, computers, all that stuff, for the little children to earn at the end of the school year to take home as gifts. Students earn points for good grades. They can use the points to purchase items from school supplies to even bicycles. Most of the items have been donated to the school by Washington Shores Presbyterian Church, and many teachers in Orange County Public Schools and principals attended that church. It may have something to do with it, but anyway. These fun and educational items help motivate students to succeed academically. But that's not all. Students also learn that reward comes from attaining goals through hard work. I can tell you from what I've seen firsthand, this program is a huge success, and it wouldn't be possible without the generosity of the Washington Shores Presbyterian Church. Could Principal Dr. Vicky Jones-Brooks, my namesake, please rise? Dr. Brooks is also a former employee of Orange County Public Schools and a former principal. She's a member of that church. Let us hear for the amazing program teamwork has made possible. If the two of you will come and join us at the front for a certificate and a photo opt, please. Thank you.
And Member Felder, while you're making your way down there, Ms. Brooks was also the principal at Metro West Elementary School when my first child was there. How are you? So good to see you. Thank you, Member Felder. And I'm particularly excited that you recognized Ms. Brooks. I don't know if you heard me saying she was the principal at my, my kid's elementary school when my first child was there. Yeah, I've never forgotten her after all these years. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so thank all of you. Now, I'm going to invite Member Vanos to introduce her first special recognition honorees. Member Vanos.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. I'm proud tonight to recognize Kristi Hodges, the theater teacher at Glen Ridge Middle School. Kristi, could you please stand? Kristi has built a theater program that rivals any in the state. In fact, her troupe has represented OCPS at the state level for three years in a row. And they won first place two of those years. Many of her students took home individual awards as well. But what makes Mrs. Hodges amazing is her passion to teach all students and reach all students. As you can see on the screen, whether it's her beginner or production class, her 220 students gravitate toward her enthusiasm. Mrs. Hodges has also always opened her doors to include students with disabilities. Her students have performed for our students with autism and sensory processing disorders. She has also used grant funding to produce and perform a play aligned with the ELA classes, and that has allowed all of our students to see the connection between written text and the arts. As a parent shared, Mrs. Hodges also works to create good citizens. She comes in early and stays late to accommodate rehearsals for multiple productions each year. And this is in a middle school, multiple productions each year in a middle school. And despite these long days, she remains patient, kind, and positive. While she guides her students, they take responsibility for everything from acting to costumes, makeup, props, lighting, and stage management. And I just want to share that I learned about Mrs. Hodges while I was on mom duty. I was actually in my car, and I heard some of her students sharing about her to some of their friends. And I, and having a middle schooler, I can say that the highest praise one can receive is appreciation and positive recognition from a middle school student. So it's really incredible what you are doing, that the students actually see and appreciate what you do. It takes, it takes a lot, and so thank you for what you are doing. I could not be more proud of, of your work and the students that you have touched to make, to make a difference. Glen Ridge is so lucky to have a teacher like you, Ms. Hodges. So congratulations, Mrs. Hodges, and Principal Kempinger. And if you can bring your family up for our picture, please. And now, I'm pleased to recognize a phenomenal student. Adam, can you please stand up? Adam Mendelson is a senior at Edgewater High School. Like many of us, he was concerned about the rise in antisemitism here in Orange County and across the nation, and he decided to do something about it. He raised more than $30,000 to bring a Holocaust exhibit to Edgewater High School in January. His efforts made it possible for students, staff, teachers, and community to experience a small part of what it felt like to be transported via train car to a concentration camp during World War II. Through Adam's work, Holocaust artifacts were also on display, providing a glimpse into the day-to-day realities of this grim time. The propaganda shown in the cattle car and displayed with the artifacts was also provocative. That's because it highlighted the similarities with what we have been seeing in our own society. Two Holocaust survivors also participated, and hearing their stories was extremely touching and moving. It's hard to truly appreciate the horrors of the Holocaust through a book or lesson alone. If we really want to learn from history, we need to be closer to the experience. And understanding our past through an event like this means deeper knowledge. This exhibit was important for our community. I'm grateful to Adam for his passion for education and advocacy against hate and antisemitism. I also want to say, Adam met with me today, and I learned for the first time that he also started a math tutoring company. He works with four OCPS high schools, and he pairs them with middle schools for tutoring, and he has an online math tutoring program where he employs 15 tutors and over 400 students. And his, you know, he said to me, he said, "My goal isn't about making money." He said, "I want to come back to OCPS and teach." And so I want to make sure it's a strong place to be. And unrelated, but also impressive, he started a pickleball app. Adam, congratulations to you, your parents, and to Edgewater High School for supporting you. So if you could please come up for our picture.
All right, that was, that was really, that was really cool. I, I didn't know any of that. I just know him as somebody very engaged, and that's really exciting. Yeah, that's really exciting. And you know what I love too, is that entrepreneurial spirit? And it, it takes me back to Harris Rosen, and that entrepreneurial spirit, that's just, yeah, that's so cool. Okay, well, thank you, Member Vanos. That was, like I said, that was so impressive. Okay, Vice Chair Bird, you're up. We're anxious to hear about your honorees.
Yay, thank you, Chair Jacobs. So, my first recognition tonight is for a literal lifesaver. Ms. Branton, could you please stand? So, Nikisha Branton is a behavior specialist at Lakeville Elementary. Last year, while Ms. Branton was helping supervise lunch, a nightmare scenario played out, and a student began choking and stopped breathing. Ms. Branton immediately performed the Heimlich maneuver and forced the object out of his throat, and that allowed the student to start breathing again normally. The student is now in fourth grade, and he is happy and healthy, and as a parent, I can only imagine how grateful his family must be for you. As I know the entire board appreciates you for your heroism and for the work that you do every day, thank you for being trained and know how to, knowing how to do that. And thank you for being, having the wherewithal to do it and the courage, and thank you for everything you do. Come on up. Okay, so, this next recognition, I'm really, really excited about. So, I want to recognize an employee that has been doing a job that requires infinite patience, concentration, and attention, and love, that's for sure. For- But at Lakeville Elementary and Phyllis Weekly Elementary, the Kiwanis Club sponsors Terrific Kids, a monthly innovative initiative, I'm sorry, that goes beyond academics. This program fosters character development, empowering students to set personal goals and achieve them with the support of their teachers as a goal buddy. The Apopka Kiwanis Club also plays a pivotal role in shaping future leaders by sponsoring the Key Club at Apopka High School. The program allows students to make a positive impact as they serve their school and community. As you can see in some of the photos, their commitment extends to community cleanups, like the one with my predecessor on the board, District 2 County Commissioner Christine Moore. This, this and other vital projects exemplify the spirit of service that we try to instill in our students. Over Christmas break, they worked with our social worker at Wakava High School to help buy gifts for all of our students that are experiencing homelessness, or, you know, yeah, homelessness. So she, it was just such a beautiful, beautiful expression of caring community, and that was when I was like, okay, they're already, they're already in the schools all the time, helping and doing so much, but when they reached out about that, I was like, okay, I'm bringing them in. I want to ask all of them to please come up, because I really do want to extend my deepest appreciation for you, Frances, and for the rest of the club. The work that you are doing constantly in our schools in Apopka is just amazing, and we could not do everything we do without your support, so thank you. Come on up.
Thank you Vice Chair Bird, and to my fellow board members, thank you all for bringing forth some amazing people. I said at the beginning, sometimes you can focus so much on what's wrong, you can, if you're like me and you watch the news every night, it can be pretty depressing. But all you have to do is look around our community and look at the amazing people who just pour their hearts and souls into our students. Here at Orange County Public Schools, we've got incredible teachers. The team that our superintendent has put together, her leadership team, is just second to none. And of course, we've got a phenomenal superintendent, and the whole board takes credit for her, by the way. But we made a good choice. Anyway, I just, I can't thank you all enough for being here and for what you do every day. God bless you. Our ceremony is over. We will have a reception out in the lobby if you want to join us. Thank you.
Thanks.[1175.65]